Good morning, City Council. We'll be having two public hearings and then a change from our usual agenda. We will be going into what we hope to be a short executive session at the front end of our agenda. Usually, we have those at the end of our agenda. And to make it a little easier for those that have come to speak to City Council, we will leave from here. You guys will be able to stay here and we will just go into City Council office, have our executive session, and probably when we come back, you'll find out what that's all about. So, be all that as it may. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for the Beaumont Green annexation, which will be coming in as an R3. A public hearing is literally for the public to give us any input that they wish to have on the zoning of the Beaumont Green project. I do see that we have several representatives of Beaumont Green. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak to council regarding the Beaumont Green This is not too surprising. Many times, we do not have people that are wishing to speak at a public hearing, going twice.
Phil?
Yes, Mayor Wild.
I will point out that this is the third reading is tonight, oh forty-eight oh eight.
Okay.
So, if anyone knows this is the last one.
So, later on, we will, if all indices are correct, probably accept Beaumont Green into the city with a zoning of R3. Seeing no one wishing to speak before council tonight, we will call this public hearing closed. The next item on our agenda is again a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, and at least I have Mayor Wild who will speak to this.
Are we starting now? It says seven fifteen. Aren't we supposed to be on this?
Well, should we hold it off then? I thought maybe we could get things moved up here.
Well, again, that actually requires another pass around of the sign-in sheet.
The old sign-in sheet.
We've gotten them all at once, but I figured what fifteen is, everybody can do it at least again. We start it around again and then fill in the rest. Here you go. Now, you're here for the other one. Okay, again, this is the first.
Paul, I'm being told by our clerk, who I take orders from very well, always have and plan to continue to.
She has to wait.
She can make my life easy or not.
She knows what she's doing.
And she knows what she's doing more than I ever will. And due to legalities and such things, we probably do need to call a recess until seven fifteen, at which point we will have our public hearing.
I have no problem with that.
At the time that was advertised, which is seven fifteen. So, folks, we'll see you back here at seven fifteen. Again, it is Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand and eight, and we are coming up on the second public hearing that we have scheduled on tonight's agenda. Immediately after this public hearing, though, council will establish its quorum and then move into executive session, and the members of council will leave the room for this. But first, the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. Mayor Wild, you'll be speaking to this, I believe.
And I say, if you get a chance, sign in the sign-in sheet for the public hearing. This is the first public hearing for the use of the CDBG form real allocation money given to the City of Athens on an annual basis by the Ohio Department of Development. This grant is to be submitted June twenty-seventh of this year. The second public hearing will be June twenty-third, beginning at seven P.M. here in council chambers. The city has been notified by the Ohio Department of Development that a grant allocation for the amount in the fiscal year of two thousand and eight will be ninety-one thousand dollars. This grant is the non-competitive form real allocation program. The program can fund a broad range of activities, including economic development projects, street water supply, drainage, and sanitary sewer improvements, park acquisition improvements, demolition of unsafe structures, rehabilitation of housing, and neighborhood facilities. Activities must be designed to primarily benefit low and moderate income persons, aid in prevention and elimination of slums and blight, or meet an urgent need of community. The past two fiscal years, two thousand and seven and fiscal year two thousand and eight, which is not yet complete, were dedicated to enhancement of the Arts West Building and rebuilding of the concrete part of the steps at Fort and Fairview. And in two thousand and eight, it will be completed this summer, the renovation and street curb and stormwater systems of Granville and Mary Streets. And that's all I really have to say about it.
Well, is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight regarding the Community Development Block Grant application? Seeing none? Yes, member Sands.
I just wanted to make clear that what we are doing is asking for suggestions from citizens of Athens for how this money could be used in those areas of the city that the mayor was talking about. Council and the administration will come up with our ideas, but these public hearings are really for all of you to express your opinions for consideration during this discussion. And so, I'm sorry, you mentioned a second public hearing which will be scheduled for...
The twenty-third of June at seven o'clock here. And as Jim says, this is to get public input for all this activity. Most of this goes towards the grant. Some of it is allocated for administration and other ones for housing needs. I forget the exact mix of this, so we're not talking about straight ninety-one thousand, but it's enough to do some projects. In the past, we've done also street lights, traffic lights, I believe, on Court Street at one point. And again, this is for the input for where people think that needs to be something fixed. You'll have another chance, the twenty-third, seven o'clock.
Jim, thanks for mentioning that. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, is there any member of council wishing to speak? Is there anyone wishing to speak before council on these? Seeing none, we will draw to a close this public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant application. Next item on our agenda is to establish a quorum, and we have a quorum with all members present. And item number two on tonight's agenda is council and executive session to discuss some personnel issues. Do you have a motion to move into executive session?
Mr. President, I move that we move into executive session to discuss personnel compensation issues, to include the mayor, all members of council, the president, the mayor, and the law director for this discussion.
Motion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. Christine?
Aye.
Lahu?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
That's all. We will be back, I would hope, by seven thirty. If not, it shouldn't take too much longer than that. It's a very planned, short session. We're back. Welcome back to Athens City Council for the third time tonight. Again, it is May nineteenth. City Council was in a reasonably short executive session to discuss a personnel issue that we will become aware of in a few minutes. Next item on our agenda is disposition of minutes. I have before us the regular session of council, the meeting minutes of the regular session of council from May fifth, oh eight. Do I have a motion to accept?
Shall move.
Motion second, further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been accepted. Communications. Has anyone in receipt of any communications they wish to share before council tonight?
Mr. President, is it time to amend the agenda?
Well, we can now if you'd like.
Mr. President, I move that we amend tonight's agenda to add ordinance oh sixty-eight oh eight.
Motion second to amend tonight's agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. Ordinance sixty-eight oh eight shall be considered at the end of our session, or the last item of first readings. Are there any other communications? Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wild.
Just two things I want to mention. One being, as I've received several calls about Five Fest, it's outside the city limits, but it impacted some of Dairy Lane and I guess Richland Avenue, and I was concerned about that.
Oh, a long view of heights, you could sit out in your yard and listen to the music quite clearly.
Did they charge you? But I say, I just want to relay that. I did receive several calls about the amount of trash and the need rate of people staggering up and down Ellevestville, Blackburn, Dairy Lane, and any forested wood in between here and there in the city. The other one is that, as you know, I hired a planner. I'll have a meet and greet, so to speak, town hall meeting this Thursday at seven o'clock. I think it's Room A at the community center. So, if anybody's at seven o'clock, twenty-second, Thursday, that's in case you want to meet them and, you know, talk to them about what you think should be done. And that's it.
I thought I got a notice that he was going to be at the...
No, I think that's tentative.
Oh, okay.
So, it's not...
He was also scheduled to be at our Neighborhood Association meeting.
Oh, really?
At seven o'clock on Thursday, but it would appear that the mayor gets his way.
Come on down.
We might.
Kathy Hack, no report. Law Director, Kathy Plank.
Mr. President, I would just note that we filed our answer today in the lawsuit of Palmer Place they filed against us, and I will keep council updated as there are things to update you on.
Good. Thank you. On to ordinances for third reading. Oh thirty-three oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase one unmarked police vehicle. Member Coon.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance zero thirty-three oh eight.
Second.
This is the unmarked vehicle for the police department. They have agreed to purchase a Chevrolet Malibu hybrid for its unmarked vehicle.
So, it's no longer the Ford. Okay.
No longer the Ford Escape, no longer the open bed vehicle.
Okay.
They have compromised.
Okay. Further discussion on ordinance thirty-three. Member Gosman.
The Chevy Malibu is much more expensive than a regular Malibu, and the hybrid version is much more expensive than a regular one. It only gets two miles per gallon better. We will not be benefiting from this purchase if it goes through for the Malibu. Either environmentally or financially, it will simply cost us more money, so I would urge people to vote against this.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance thirty-three?
I have one more comment.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. My apologies. Although knowing that it's a hybrid, wouldn't there be less exhaust because it would be running on electric during...
I don't want to get sued by Chevrolet, but it's really, it's a hybrid light vehicle, which basically has the name hybrid and maybe some of the tax benefits, but it only has a difference of two miles per gallon in terms of fuel efficiency, so it's not significantly different from their normal gasoline engine. So, the pollution would be very similar to the normal.
Interesting.
Further. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this is new information to me, and I don't know procedurally if we could table this and, you know, talk about it again.
Right now, we've got a motion and a second to adopt, so the only way we could do that would be either to vote on the motion to adopt or for the sponsor to withdraw her motion and the second to withdraw the second. So...
I'm willing to withdraw it to discuss it further if you need to. Please. Okay. I move to withdraw.
You withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second. Yeah, I was not aware of this information. I told you it's not...
I would entertain a motion to table.
Shall move. Second.
Motion second to table ordinance thirty-three oh eight, a long hard fought over ordinance. Mayor Wild, almost did it again, didn't I?
Okay, yes. So, the intention of tabling is to find more information, different information, or what?
Way it off.
Way it off.
Yeah.
The Malibu, the Malibu Lite, the Escape Hybrid, the Unescaped.
I'm stunned. I'm stunned at thirty-three thousand for a car that's only two miles better per gallon. I mean, I was, if we had voted, I would have voted for it because I was...
Again, this has to do with a, it's simply talking about an unmarked vehicle. It doesn't say what kind. Do you want to revamp this so you say exactly what model and number you need?
That's true. The ordinance doesn't say, doesn't specify the vehicle. They have just indicated that that's what they're going to buy.
And it's thirty-three thousand dollars. I could probably almost buy a Hummer for that.
No, not even close.
No, I'm just teasing.
Well, and the other thing that I would ask council to take note of, I personally, and eighteen years of being in here, cannot remember a time that we tied the administration's hands on what was to be purchased.
I think I can remember times when we did.
Okay.
I do think, you know, and we, they have next till Tuesday. Next Tuesday, we're having a session. You can do it at that point.
Well, right now, the motion before council is to table. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on tabling the ordinance only? All those in favor of tabling the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been tabled. Ordinance forty-seven oh eight, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately fourteen point six five eight three acres on Della Drive filed by Beaumont Green LLC. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of oh forty-seven oh eight.
Second.
This ordinance accepts the petition for annexation. We've gone through several steps in this process where we agreed to provide city services. It was then released by the county and is now before us to accept for annexation into the city. The project has already been built, so I think folks are familiar with where this is out on the East End.
Further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance forty-seven?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Congratulations. Ordinance forty-eight oh eight, an ordinance designating the zone for the Beaumont Green annexation area. Again, member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of oh forty-eight oh eight.
Second.
You almost lost it.
This ordinance establishes the zoning, which was recommended by the Planning Commission to be R3. We did have a public hearing earlier this evening, and no one spoke to us about it at that time.
Is there further discussion on ordinance forty-eight? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-one oh eight, an ordinance providing for the issuance of one and a half million dollars of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Member Sands.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance fifty-one oh eight.
Second.
This ordinance, as is said, provides for the issuance of one million five hundred thousand dollars' worth of notes. We are actually paying down our debt by two hundred thousand dollars. Prior to this, we have owed one million seven hundred thousand dollars on a four million dollar project, so we are making progress. We are paying down our accumulated debt for this very necessary work that was done on East State Street. But this is approving a new issuance of a note for one million five hundred thousand dollars.
Motion and a second for adoption of ordinance fifty-one oh eight. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-two oh eight, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington Streets on Saturday, September twentieth, oh eight, from twelve P.M. to five P.M. for the Second Annual Business Fair. Member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move acceptance of the ordinance oh five two oh eight. This is for a closing for a street fair which will occur on September twentieth. It's primarily educational, informational with the businesses, and is oriented towards Ohio University students, and closes the portion of Court between Union and Washington for that purpose.
Motion and second for the adoption of ordinance fifty-two oh eight. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-three oh eight, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. Again, member Nysley.
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance oh five three oh eight.
Second.
This is for an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs. The street director and his department have reviewed the streets in the city that are needing repair. There was a tour conducted on April fifth. Final recommendations were made on April twenty-fifth with the repairs to be completed over the summer.
Seems ironic that a ordinance that does so much is so short.
It is.
Is there further discussion on ordinance fifty-three oh eight? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-four oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the filing of an application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. DOT, Federal Transit Administration, FTA, as authorized under federal transit laws, as codified forty-nine U.S.C., Section fifty-three eleven, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas, and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program and Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant application approval for the period from January one oh nine through December thirty-one oh nine. Member Nysley, why does that have to be so long?
Mr. President, I move for approval of this ordinance oh five four oh eight.
Second.
As long as this ordinance is, this will do the community a lot of good. It provides a grant, it's an renewal, an annual renewal of a grant program that will provide public transportation assistance for the elderly and disabled for their transit fare.
Motion and a second for adoption of ordinance fifty-four oh eight. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance fifty-five oh eight, an ordinance amending ordinance oh one twenty-nine oh six, establishing fees as required by the Athens City Code. This is introduced by all members of council. Member Bain? No, member Phillips.
Mr. President, I move adoption of oh fifty-five oh eight.
Second.
This ordinance, we have one section of code that sets fees for a lot of different activities, just so they're all in one place and we don't miss them when we update things. So, what this does, we increased the traffic ticket fines a while back, and the administrative fines were not the same, and the code officers do write some tickets, and to make them be handled the same, this makes the administrative fine be thirty dollars, which can be paid in five days. So, it changes to that five-day grace period as well. And it also changes the name of the, to development permit for the floodplain application.
Motion and second for adoption of ordinance fifty-five. Is there further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. On to ordinances for second reading. Oh fifty-six oh eight, an ordinance amending ordinance oh thirty-six oh seven, authorizing a contract to upgrade the city's telephone and computer networking systems, project number two twenty-eight, and amending the two thousand and eight appropriation ordinance.
Mayor Wild, you need this suspended?
No. Actually, I think I should go for another reading, and I think we might have to amend this upward.
Okay.
For the third time.
Yes. And the reason why I'm saying that is I think the last conversation I had with Ron was the Roosevelt Tower is going to get a flashing light on it, and we might want that oscillates in terms of intensity, depending on whether it's day or night.
For birds.
For residents.
I thought that we had it one foot below what would require a light on it.
Last I heard, it was not the case because we're within a certain distance of an airport.
Well, that's a shame.
Let's, well, we'll find out before the third reading. How's that sound?
Okay. So, I'm not hearing that we need a suspension.
We need to amend it again.
Ordinance fifty-seven oh eight, an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations to the Citizens Bank of Logan for property located outside of the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split. Ordinance sixty oh eight is an ordinance amending the two thousand and eight appropriation ordinance and authorizing inter-fund transfers. Ordinance sixty-one oh eight is an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of city funds for certain city-sponsored listed events. Ordinance sixty-two oh eight, an ordinance amending ordinance oh forty-one oh six, establishing a fee schedule for solid waste and recycling, Title V of the Athens City Code.
Mr. President, this...
Member Bain.
To move to amend oh sixty-two oh eight, specifically on the first page where it says ten or more occupants, adding the language plus three dollars and twenty cents for each additional thirty-gallon container per week. The Second Amendment is a new Schedule A with higher amounts of money, which I think you have in your pocket. I hope somebody seconded that. This is a work in progress.
It's only second reading. Who would have expected?
Right.
Okay.
And the other, yeah, we're going to vote on it, and I can't talk, right?
Yeah. Well, we'll see. Let's do the amendment first. Motion and a second to amend oh sixty-two oh eight as stated. Is there further discussion on amendment only? All those in favor of amending ordinance sixty-two oh eight?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been amended and has now been read for the first time. It appears that we do not need to suspend. Now, on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance sixty-three oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a vehicle for the prior department. Member Coon.
Mr. President, the...
Good luck with this one.
The fire chief has requested the purchase of a vehicle that will be driven by him so that the vehicle that he is driving now can be passed down to Station Two and used for towing at Station Two. The new vehicle would be used for towing at Station One, at the main fire station.
Okay. Further discussion? Ordinance sixty-four oh eight, an ordinance granting a variance from the Athens City subdivision regulations for property located on Mulligan Road owned by Robert Demont to allow a minor lot split. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, this comes to us on a recommendation from the Planning Commission. There is an attached drawing of the area where you can see that although this is a recommended variance, it is very similar to some other lots immediately adjacent to it. We did have a question in committee about some deed language, which the law director, I think, is going to check on and get back to us before we're at third reading.
Further discussion on ordinance sixty-four. Ordinance sixty-five oh eight, an ordinance amending the two thousand and eight appropriation ordinance and authorizing an inter-fund transfer. Member Sands.
Mr. President, this ordinance has several sections, and it does several things. Section one is talking about appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums: hundred thousand dollars appropriated to the general fund, one thousand dollars to the Mansfield House Maintenance Fund. The Mansfield House is the house on the grounds of the community center that the Convention of Visitor and Bureau occupies. It is our property, and we maintain that, so there's some work that needs to be done. Also appropriating fifteen thousand dollars to the Athens City Enhancement Fund to cover the cost of the city's paint program. This is a program that was started several years ago at the suggestion of Member Tamkey to offer services for painting houses for lower-income citizens of Athens. The city would pay for that. Recently, that's been amended to do some minor maintenance along with that painting also, so we're going to make that available for the summer season. Section two actually decreases some appropriations, decreasing the general fund transaction class, general fund of one oh one point three fifty-one, transaction class one hundred, which is a personnel... general fund of 101.351, transaction class 100, which is a personnel line, by $34,900. This is, this is removing a position in the code office for a code inspector and decreasing that appropriation for the year. Recreation Fund 270 decreased by $6,700, Community Center Fund by $21,000. This is reducing salaries that would be paid to an assistant recreation director in the second half of the year. That position is not going to be filled at least this year. And we're decreasing the Emergency Shelter Fund, which is the fund that comes from Department of Development, passes through the city to the Good Works Program. Department of Development of Ohio has decided that the city will no longer act as the pass-through agent, and so we have already appropriated some money. We're going to decrease that appropriation by $61,850 for the current year pass-through. And back in Section 1, we appropriated $100,000 to the general fund. We're authorizing the auditor to make an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to Capital Improvements, and then move this $100,000 from Capital Improvements into a designated fund for replacement of the fire department ladder truck. Some purchase that needs to be made in three or four years. So this is beginning to save for that ladder truck.
Further discussion? Thank you, member Sands. Ordinance 6608, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to extend the current contract for solid waste management and ancillary services for one year and declaring an emergency. Introduced by all members of council. Member Bain, will you speak to this?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. O 6608 is a temporary, one-year extension of our solid waste management contract with the Athens Hawking Solid Waste District. We have a report that in 2006, the contrast between this year and 2006 is pretty close to $100,000. Our four, more than $4 cost of diesel is something that we're going to add to our existing contract, and that's basically what we're doing in here. The reason why we're rolling this contract is because it's up on the 1st of July. At that point, we probably won't be ready yet. Paula and Mike have been, Mike Gosnell, have been working on the charges in the Uptown District with the view of trying to make sure that we're getting all of the funds overdue. There's also an initiative to reorganize some of the Uptown and close-in neighborhoods pickup. That's also going to take some time. And so it will also possibly modify the contract. It seemed, since we've done it many times before, like a good idea, as long as we have the July 1 deadline looming. So our ordinance then will increase the unappropriated balance by $120,000 to the garbage fund to cover increased fuel costs, increasing the total appropriation by that amount. That's what's going on. Last time we had a contract, excuse me, we had pretty much a flat amount every year. I don't know how it will go in the future. I think that the service director will be talking and negotiating on that point. We've got a year to cover it. I hope it doesn't take that long. They seem to be on a, on a good trajectory with respect to getting the downtown garbage thing sorted out, which, as you know, from listening to me, give you something I'm interested in.
Thank you, Member Bain. Is there further discussion on ordinance 66? Member Wild.
So not, section 3.
Member Wild, Mayor Wild. Always a member to me.
I didn't even blink. Okay. Section 3, as you noticed, shows you some of the total amount we're talking about right now, which is $845,000.
Which is our base in the audience. Thank you.
So that's what costs for doing trash.
Any other comments? Ordinance 6708, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Grosvenor Street slip repair. Member Nysley. Boy, you know how to spend money later.
How am I doing? This is the slip on Grosvenor Street that is approximately 200, or will require a solution that will be approximately 253 feet in length. The ordinance for this is for the design costs only, and would allocate $34,000 for the design of the repairs to be made to that, for that slip.
One of the items I saw in my mailbox looks at an rough estimate of about $370,000 overall for the total amount. Of course, that's just an estimate.
Correct. That's an estimate, and that does include the engineering design cost. So there's the actual construction cost of about $300,000, $304,000, and a contingency fee of about $34,000.
Okay.
Which means it's extended.
Okay. Any further comments on ordinance 67? Item 9 on our agenda is announcements in other business.
68.
Oh, I'm sorry. We did amend our agenda, did we not? I have a copy of 68. Oh, good. Here, why go? One night I'll show up without my reading glass. I'm sure everybody's going to enjoy this. Ordinance 6808, quiet thing. An ordinance amending ordinance O 15107 authorized staffing levels and a non-union pay scale for the fiscal year ending December 31, '08, and declaring an emergency. Who wishes to speak to this one? Member Sands.
Mr. President.
We've heard a number of them.
Mr. President, this ordinance accomplishes or suggests two, two actions. The first is amending authorized staffing levels, and attached is a list of our staffing levels. We are deleting the animal control officer slot. We have not funded that slot for quite a while since Ms. Planacek retired, and so we're deleting that at this point. We're also, in one of the previous ordinances, we talked about removing funds, decreasing some funds to cover a code inspector's position. We're also deleting one code inspector from, from the staffing levels. So that's amending the staffing levels. Also, we're amending, we're proposing to amend the non-union pay scale for the fiscal, for the fiscal year ending December 31st. What we're proposing, and this is what we discussed in executive session a few minutes ago, what we're proposing is that we would give a flat $1,000 increase to all members of our non-union staff in grades 1 through 6, and also the people in grade 7 and 8 who had been topped out and had not received a raise in the past salary schedule. This would take effect if everything flows as we hope. July 1 of this year would flow through the end of this calendar year, and we propose that it would then flow from December to July of 2009. During that time, we propose to review, discuss, and revamp our salary schedule if that is necessary, but certainly a review will be taken. So our proposal is that this $1,000 raise, as you might call it, would be awarded to the employees in each of their bi-weekly paychecks for the next one year. And attached to the ordinance is a, an amended salary schedule showing that raise.
Further discussion on ordinance 67? Thank you, member Sands. Next item, announcements in other business. What committee meetings would we like next week? Member Bain.
Mr. President, even though I'm not retired next Tuesday, I'm not going to be here, I would like to have a special session in which we would read 6208. If Sherry wants 6308, okay? 60.
I do.
6508, 6608. That will put everything up for adoption on the 2nd of June, and have us write in line for the 1st of July. Okay? Anything else you want to add to it? Feel free.
We'll send it to you.
Well, that's your decision.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
It's a Monday. Okay. Member Phillips.
Mr. President, Member Bain requested that we do our field trip to the Celebration Garden on another date because she won't be able to be here early on Tuesday. So we'll find another date.
Would you like to make a proposal date? No. We'll, we'll give council time to see what best works. Okay. Any other committee meetings?
I will, as always, reserve a space for finance.
Well, we're having a special session, so I guess we can do some committees and special session also. Committee meetings on Tuesday, too, or not?
I can be here. I'd like to do it next week.
Well, we could give the clerk a call if anything really comes up that somebody fills up any debt.
Or should we just cancel it?
We're canceling. I don't know too much too pressing. Yes, member Gosnell.
I will probably need a committee meeting next week to bring up the diesel emissions reduction grant.
So would we want to do meetings before council?
I do know that I do have some finance, finance issues to talk about, to talk about, that we would want to have first reading for. So my suggestion is we have committees before the session.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would like to reserve, in case we need a transportation committee meeting. I'll confirm that with you for sure.
Okay. Keeping in mind, special sessions generally start at 7, but we can, will council rules allow us to have it at 7:30, and then maybe committee meetings possibly starting 6:45, 6:30? That way, we should be able to get down what you guys want to do.
Finance should be pretty short.
And would you expect yours to also be?
I could do safety so that we can discuss.
It'll fit in there. Okay. Opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items or city services that we did not cover on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak before council tonight? Casey. You're handling it, Casey. Come on, Casey. Okay. We ask that you state your name and address, and council rules provide for three minutes.
Okay. Lindsey Daniels, 20 Fairview Avenue, Athens. I actually thought I was going to be speaking to a different issue tonight, but maybe some other time. I'd like to just briefly talk about something that impacts our community, impacts all communities, our society, something that, you know, you might see reported here and there, but often doesn't get talked about on a large scale beyond service provision or intervention, and that's the problem of sexual violence. And I'm bringing that up because some of you might know that I am the program coordinator for the Sexual Assault Prevention Program run out of Tri-County Mental Health and Counseling. We focus on primary prevention of sexual assault, which is thinking of actions, activities, services, things to do educational-wise, legislative-wise, what have you, to stop sexual assault from happening in the first place. So we're talking not only about reducing victimization, but also reducing possible perpetration. And I'm just throwing this out there. It's something that I've been thinking about for a while, developing a proposal. I'd like to talk to city council. I'd like to talk to the mayor. I'd like to talk to community members about how we, as a city, really can impact this problem of sexual assault, sexual violence, what we can do according to the spectrum of prevention, not only about individual levels, attitude change, what can we do in our businesses, what can we do in the workplace, also what are some things that we might be able to do legislatively. So I'm just throwing that out there and letting people know who I am.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Andrews. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before council? Seeing none, and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.